A very good afternoon to you all and welcome to this January Schools Forum meeting. My thanks to Robert for chairing the meeting in November when I was away. For the meeting today, as ever, if anybody would like to raise a point, please either put up your hand or put a note in the chat and that will let me know that you'd like to say something and I'll come to you. And when I do, please feel free to put on your camera while you're speaking and participate in the meeting in that way, that would be good. And just to also say which school you're from and what your name is so that everybody on the call is aware of who is participating. Thank you. Theresa has kindly already gone through the voting procedure for later, so I won't do that now. We've had apologies for today's meeting from Daniel Jones, Karen Lodge, Wendy James and councillor Rachel Hood. So those are the apologies we've had. So during the meeting, unless you're speaking, I'd be grateful if you could keep your cameras off, please. I will keep my camera on so at least anybody who is presenting papers have somebody that they can at least feel they're talking to and not just lots of circles on the screen. So moving on, the first paper is the minutes of the previous meeting held on the 22nd of November. So if we could please take these for matters arising and accuracy page by page. So going with page one and two, three, four, five and six. So I'll take it as nobody has put their hand up or called out that you're happy with those as an accurate record of the last meeting. And I did in looking through so that there were no actions being carried forward to today. So thank you very much. That means we've soon agreed those. So the next item on the agenda is Paper B, the proposal to formalise the Schools Forum substitute arrangements and I'll hand over to Adrian. Thank you, Adrian.
Thank you, Alison. Good afternoon, everybody. Hopefully, the paper is fairly clear and many forum members will recognise that we mentioned this at a previous meeting. The idea that each member of forum identifies a substitute who is a formal substitute who could attend in their place. We recognise just how busy everybody is and it feels like a good belt and braces that there is a proper substitute arrangement. What I didn't put in the paper but wanted to say in the meeting is that obviously people will have connections with their sector in terms of identifying who a substitute might be. But any forum member that thought, oh, I'm struggling a bit here to think about who might be a substitute for me, the local authority would assist with that, would assist in finding a substitute. So I wouldn't want anybody thinking, oh, I'm not sure where I would get a substitute from. So there's an offer there to support with that. It is something that forums need to agree on and local authorities propose it. My sense is that it's a good way to ensure that we're always corret. And also, people move jobs and people move on. We'll be going out for elections for some of the vacancies there are on forum. It's a good way actually to encourage people to join forum as a substitute to think about progression planning for future forum members. So I'll stop there. I'm very happy to take any questions. And yeah, I can see one there, one there from Darren. Yeah, I think it could be from your own trust. Looking at the regulations, Darren, essentially the key aspect is that a substitute is from the same sector. So from the mainstream academy sector, from the mainstream maintained sector, from the special academy sector. That's the only stipulation that a substitute comes from the same group. And I think we could be quite flexible around that. I wonder, is it valuable though, to spread it possibly across, you know, trusts that might not have a representative on forum? But that's entirely up to each individual, individual, you know, that puts themselves forward for that. I hope that answers the question on that. Thanks, Stephen. Again, if you've got something on that. Rowena, I think it can be within the broad level that the membership is required on forum. So that's academy CEOs, academy head teachers, academy deputy principals and all the same applies for maintained sector. So people of the, they don't have to be identical. So it's not necessarily a head teacher replacing a head teacher. However, folks will remember what we try to do is keep a good balance between school and setting leaders and governors. So it would be good to try and keep that balance. That said, being corret is probably more important. So we could be quite flexible around that. I hope that answers the question, Rowena.
Rob, can I bring you in next because you've had your hand up?
Oh, sorry, I can't see hands up there. My screen's truncated. Robert, do come in on that.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Alison. Thanks. Hello, Adrian. And just a couple of things. Do you want some sort of CV sent into you from our substitutes? So are you going to just rely on our choice of person? And just two things so I don't talk wrong. You mentioned sort of vacancies on the forum. How many ideally would you like to see on forum? I mean, would you want to go up to sort of 20? Is there a number that you want to increase it to, to broaden it out a bit? So those were the two points really.
Thanks, Robert. I'll pick up those as separate questions. I think our view from a local authority perspective, and I've had a conversation with one or two other local authorities that are running substitute arrangements at the moment, we would be trusting that people would be identifying somebody that was appropriate. Now, you know, if in due course, we, you know, nothing against school caretakers. If we discovered it was a school care, we might have a conversation about that. But I don't think we'd be needing to see CVs. What we'd want to know is that it was somebody comparable and that fits within the expectation. So leadership, you know, leadership arrangements. In terms of the numbers of forum, actually that's set in our constitution. And I think the number's 22 and the split is between academies and maintained schools. And actually, we're running, because of the majority of schools in Suffolk are academies, we're running with the bare minimum we can operate in terms of maintained representation with the vast majority of the representation being from the academy sector. Hope that answers your question.
Thanks very much.
Thank you. And I've seen Sonia's question. Yeah, it's a really good question. What we do, if this is agreed, what we would ask is that if somebody was substituting, bear in mind that it could be quite late in the day. Busy, busy school and setting leaders and governors know that things can come up at the last minute. I think we'd need 24 hours notice of a forum meeting that a substitute would be attending. And I looked at the substitute arrangements in six other local authorities and they all ask for 24 hours notice. So essentially Theresa, as the administrator for forum, would need to know if we agree this, that a substitute was attending 24 hours before. Hope that answers that one, Sonia. I can't see any other hands up, but my screen didn't pick Robert up. I don't know if you can see any, Alison.
One more coming from Stephen.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, let me just give me a chance to have a quick look at that.
So everyone who didn't win the election to forum was put on as a substitute and that helped provide progression for people to learn about schools forum and later become members.
Yeah, that's an interesting suggestion. We, Norfolk have got a slightly smaller forum than we have. As a result of that, we've not had a situation for probably more than 18 months where we've had lots of people applying and there've been lots of people that didn't get through. But certainly that's something that could be given consideration. But at this stage, we haven't got a pool of people that didn't win. So maybe that's something we could look at going forward. Thank you for that, Stephen. A helpful insight into another authority's forum.
And I think it's helpful to reiterate, I know you put it in the paper, Adrian, that although you'd want 24 hour notice, that once people are named substitutes, that they would receive the papers as well. So hopefully it wouldn't mean they'd be scrabbling around to try and read the papers.
Exactly. Thanks, Alison. That's a well-made point. Yeah, I put it in the paper that in effect the substitutes would get the papers. So they'd be cited on them if it was a short notice call for them to stand in. But also we'd encourage for substitutes to attend a forum meeting perhaps along with their, with the person they substitute for. So they were familiar with the operations and activity of forum. I can't see any other questions there. So I guess that takes us to the vote, Alison.
It does, yes.
Collect people's views on that.
Yeah, indeed. Yeah, if there's no doubt, questions they want to raise first, then I'll ask Barbara to load the question for us, please. Here we go. So if voting members could now respond to say, do you agree to identify a formal substitute from your sector to be a regular substitute in the event that you are unable to attend a forum meeting? Bearing in mind that if you think you would struggle to find your own substitute, that Adrian and his team would help to support to do that process. So if you could vote now, please. Thank you very much. So we've now had 16 votes in and everybody is in favour. So thank you very much.
Thanks very much, everybody.
What deadline would you like to set, Adrian, for everybody to either let you know that they want help to find a substitute or to provide you with the contact details of a substitute?
I think if people could let me know within a month, that gives us plenty of time ahead of the next. So what are we, the, you know, February's a day, a month that doesn't have quite 30 days in it, but perhaps the end of February.
Super. Thank you very much. So you all have that task and no doubt Theresa will give people a nudge if they haven't come back to. So if you send your responses into Theresa and if Theresa, after about three weeks' time, if you haven't had any, all the replies that you need, then perhaps you'll give people a nudge, Theresa. Thank you. Okay, super. So we'll now move on to the next paper, which is Paper C, the early years national funding formula for 2324. Afternoon, Christina. Welcome. I'll hand over to you. Thank you.
Thanks, Alison. Good afternoon, everybody. I'm bringing this paper today, asking for your decision around how we are proposing to distribute the money available to us. It's got to be decided by forum before I can let the sector know. And it's already the end of January and the sector need to know how much money they're going to be getting from the 1st of April. We're having lots of inquiries at the moment because they need to do their budget forecasting and planning. What we are proposing in this paper, I hope it's clear for everybody, is to put the maximum amount through to providers for the two-year-old and the three and four-year-old funding rates. To put all the other supplementary bits like the EYPP deprivation, put all that through as well. And we will retain a higher payment for disability access fund than we are required to because that has worked in the last year and helped to support the needs of children with additional needs to access their early education funding. We did look at the possibility, as I've said in here, of maybe introducing a quality supplement, but we felt that that would be too much bureaucracy on your part and on ours. And I did take all these suggestions to the Providers Consultative Forum and the three early years reps here today were all present at that discussion. So maybe able to chip in at some point if they felt they wanted to. And it was the Consultative Forum's preferred option is the one that I'm putting forward to you today. So if that's clear, I'm happy to take any questions or comments.
Thank you, Christina. That was a clear paper and a nice summary there. Thank you. Andrew, you've got your hand up first. Thank you.
Thank you, Alison. Just interested in section 11 of the report and the specific mention of, in the penultimate bullet point, it says the full amount of the maintained nursery school supplement is paid to Highfield. Can you explain that one, please?
Yeah, all nursery schools across Britain get an enhanced supplement. And that's the way that the government funds them. So we only have one maintained nursery school in Suffolk. The head teacher is in the forum meeting today. And so they will get the normal funding rate plus they get their supplement. It's to recognise the uniqueness of maintained nursery schools.
Can I ask a secondary question?
Yeah.
The point below that, which talks about the teachers' pay and pension grant, how much is that? What is the difference in calculation between that and the changes that you proposed, please?
I think I would have to ask Michael if he could help me with that one. Michael Quinton, because he deals with that mostly. But I think we worked out that in the new funding, Michael will put me right if I'm wrong, he's coming to the call. And in the new funding rate, 5p for every hour would be the contribution towards the pay and pensions element. Is that right, Michael?
Yeah, that was correct, Christina. Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Any more? Let me just go to people so I can see whose hand is up. Still Andrew's hand up. Anybody else wanting to make any points? As Christina mentioned, we've got other people from the early years sector on the call. Would anybody like to add any points? Amanda.
Hi.
There we go. Yeah, we're coming through now.
I just wanted to verify that, yes, Christina did discuss it with us at the forum. As I always say at these meetings, there's a substantial increase in all of our costs for all providers and across all children. So we are very grateful that the proposal is to pass as much through to us as possible. And that will help towards funding these costs but doesn't meet those increased costs. So the sector is still struggling. And as somebody at our forum meeting succinctly said, unfortunately, we have to abide by the same rules, regulations and national live and wage rates as the rest of the country. Yet our funding is county specific, which unfortunately hits us hard.
Thank you for articulating that again, Amanda. It's always worth saying, we know what pressure the early years sector is under, particularly as you say, here in Suffolk because of the funding formula. We can only continue to thank you and the rest of the sector for what you do to try and manage around that. Sonia.
Thanks, Alison. Yeah, I mean, I completely agree. I think we were all a bit frustrated that actually in the latest round, early years sector didn't get any, anything significantly in addition. I think just to sort of, I mean, it's no consolation really, particularly for Amanda, everyone. We do, obviously, the part of the DSG that's held back for Christina's staff team, those, you know, we don't actually increase the amount to cover the inflationary costs of that. We cover that from core budget as well. So, you know, I think it's just to sort of make that note that what we don't do is then sort of, you know, we're passing over all of it, though theoretically, you know, we would theoretically have to take a bit extra to increase the cost of the staffing, but we don't do that. We make sure that's covered. We cover that in core overall. So because that's the bit that we can do as a council to support the sector.
Thank you for that information, Sonia. That's helpful. Ruth, I'll come to you now. Thank you.
Thank you. I just wanted to add that we have a retention and recruitment crisis in early years and the pay rise that we're expected to deliver in April is going to be really, really tough across the sector. We fully appreciate that the early years team don't hold back the full 5%. And Christina always makes it really clear that she only keeps exactly what's needed and that's really appreciated. And I just wanted to make sure that the team knew how much we appreciated that. But it's not enough. The funding doesn't cover costs and as much as can be passed through as possible is really, really appreciated.
Thank you very much, Ruth. That's helpful. Any other points before we vote on this paper? No? Okay, I'll hand back over to Barbara again then. Thank you. If you could launch the poll, Barbara, thank you. So could voting members please vote on whether we agree with the proposed funding rates for 2324 as described in the report? So if you could vote now, please. Thank you. 15 people have voted and everybody has voted in favour. So thank you very much. That's passed. Thank you for your time, Christine, and for coming along to see us again. That's helpful.
Thank you very much, everyone. And I shall, I've already prepared the briefing in the hope you would agree it. And so I shall get it out to the sector this afternoon. Thank you.
Excellent. Super, super stuff. Thanks, Christina. Bye. Okay, so that moves us on now to Paper D, which is the Schools Block Funding Submission for 2324. So I'll hand over to Mike this time. Thank you.
Thanks, Alison. Good afternoon, everybody. So I think Alison's keen on trying to break the Schools Forum record that Robert set last time. So I'll try and whizz through this paper. It's quite brief. I can ramble on a little bit, I know that. So this is an information paper only on the Schools Block Funding Submission for next financial year. And there's a few other points for reference in the paper as well that I thought you just may need to know. So if we just scoot down to table one, this shows Suffolk's DSG allocations for 2324. And what I've done this year, I've just included the total DSG income that we'll be getting in for next year. So there's 634.5 million. You know, that looks, that looks like a lot of money. There's been some increases, as we know, to DSG funding on last year, but we feel it's still not enough for Suffolk and I But we feel it's still not enough for Suffolk and our young people. So there's a few bits I just wanted to add that I didn't add into this paper. But our increase for Suffolk for total DSG is six point nine percent. So that's actually less than the England average. It's less than the East of England average and it's less than our statistical neighbours average. So straight away, you know, you can see that, yeah, we're getting an increase in funding, but it's not enough. And we're still below all of those averages I've just set out. So myself and Sonia, we supply Adrian, Alan, Rachel with lots of information. There's still plenty of lobbying going on. There's been, there's been plenty of letters going to MPs already this year. So we are doing, you know, our very best to try and get more money for Suffolk because we don't think it's fair. So if we just look at the Schools Block Funding in isolation, so we've got five hundred and seven point seven million to allocate to all of our schools. And if we include the mainstream schools additional grant, MSAG for short, which is indicative allocations of seventeen point four million, that's a six point two percent increase on Schools Block. Again, looking at some of the stat neighbours and the regional neighbours, we don't fare too well. You know, we're still below average on this as well. So the mainstream schools additional grant, I've just added some additional information in the paper under bullets eight through to through to eleven. I think that's just useful to have this in the paper. You can share it with your colleagues and other schools. And they can start to do some early planning on on your pupil numbers based on the October twenty-two census. But as I said in the paper, I think indicative allocations will be published sort of early part of the new financial year. Another one just to to make reference of is pupil premiums. So there's a five percent increase on pupil premium rates for next year. And you can see what those look like under bullet, under point twelve. And there's some bullet points there to show the increase at primary, secondary and the looked after children rates. And then if we just go to Annex A, that just shows the APT that I submitted to the ESFA last week. So again, your your schools, your finance people can start to to do some early planning. All of the, all of the rates in there will not change. I'll look to get all of the toolkits out to our LA maintained schools before February half term, on the tenth of February. And I think all of the academies get their budget information by the end of February. So but I just say, I think this is just gives schools a bit of an early heads up and can start to do that early planning, which I think is really important. As we're going through the the cost of living increase and inflation and things like that. So as early, as early as possible, we get the planning started. I think that's good. I thought I'd provide, provide an update on the Notional SEN budgets that schools receive each year, which is a part of your Schools Block Funding. So I know that our LA maintained schools, it's included on their toolkit, so we can see how much is actually allocated to the Notional SEN. And I believe in the Academy GAG statements that that's received, there's also a bit in there that shows how much Notional SEN you have. This is a notional budget. It's it's meant to be a guide for schools on how they can allocate some of their funding towards pupils with additional needs. And I think I'll put a bit in there that you're not held accountable to it at all. You know, it's up to you. If you spend that much, you can spend less, you can spend more. It's entirely up to the individual school. Point eighteen, you can see what the the funding is and how we allocate it here in Suffolk. And then I thought I'd just add in some tables that I did, I did sort of take from the the SFA website, but I thought they'd just be useful to to show. So Suffolk's allocation of Notional SEN as a as a percentage of the total income each school gets is eleven point two percent. And you can see on table two that we sit right in the middle. So you can see the majority of schools are around the sort of, you know, seven and a half to to twelve and a half percent, but we sit sort of bang in the middle. Which is quite comforting that we're sort of allocating that Notional SEN budget, hopefully in the correct way. And then I've just finished off the report with a bit on the growth fund. So we speak about the growth funds every year just to keep up to date and we know what's going on with it. The actual pot of funding for growth is remaining the same for twenty-three, twenty-four. At one point, just under one point eight million. And I think me and Pete came with a paper back in the summer last year, but twenty-four, twenty-five onwards is when potentially we'll see an increase in the amount that we need to to spend in relation to growth because we've got some new schools on horizon. So the growth, the growth part, although when schools grow by a class each year, that's not a massive amount of funding, but obviously it helps support teaching costs, support staff costs and setting up those classrooms. It's the setting up of new schools, which is the real big cost. And so you're looking at sort of quarter million pounds plus per school, plus all of the associated costs on top of that. So something we just need to, you know, keep an eye on. And then the last point is the Falling Roles Fund. So Forum agreed this last June, I think it was. There's a small amount of money being put aside for falling roles of two hundred thousand pounds. And this is for where schools' roles are falling in the short term, but are expected to recover in the longer term. So it's about a stopgap just to help support those schools from being in a sort of a more dire financial position. And so what we'll do over the coming months is just do a bit of work, sort of seeing which schools have seen their pans fall over the course of the year. I'll work with the admissions teams so we can see what the admissions are looking like moving forward and we can be in touch with some schools. And that's, that's if schools not in touch with me first, looking at this fund. But yeah, we'll be in touch with schools to see if they're likely to qualify. And say, and then Annex A just gives the detail behind the Schools Block Submission that was sent off last week. So I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mike. Andrew, you've got your hand up. I'll come to you first.
Thank you Alison. Michael, we all know that there is underfunding for SEN in Suffolk due to an historic element of the formula. You talked about the gap getting wider in other funding. Can you explain the reasons for that?
The reasons for in other funding as in the Schools Block or?
Yeah, yeah. You you talked about compared to statistical neighbours, our funding had increased but not as much as theirs. So I just wonder if you can explain your thoughts on why that is the case, please.
So for the Schools Block, it is again historic funding, it's a historic funding level. So if you start with a historic baseline, then you're never going to catch up. So the way that the Schools Block was set up a number of years ago, that was then transitioned into the first National Funding Formula back in two thousand thirteen, fourteen. And then obviously that's just been carried forward over the past ten years. And then we have a new baseline, but we're never actually catching up, if you see what I mean. So on the Schools Block, we're just always sort of behind the curve. And as you said, on the the High Needs Block, it's that historical funding that's been locked in based on two hundred, based on two thousand seventeen, eighteen spending levels. So about fifty percent of of the funding in the High Needs Block is based on that historical spending. So back in seventeen eighteen, Suffolk was doing their, their sort of hardest to stay within their budget envelope within the High Needs Block. Whereas we know that other local authorities possibly were not doing that as diligently as what we were. So that's, that's the reason for that sort of, that discrepancy and that we're never ever going to catch up. So although the National Funding Formula is about making sure that every single local authority is funded in the same way, it's going to take years and years for us to get to that point. And if you look at the F40 website, there's a really good piece on there. And I think it says it's going to take about thirty years based on the National Funding Formula that we've currently got for everybody to be funded on a fair basis. Well, that's just not, you know, that's not acceptable. So that's why we're trying to do something about it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michael.
There's a question in the chat from Darren. If MSAEG is rolled into Schools Funding from April twenty-four, would you envisage that DFE may have to provide academies with five months' worth of April to August twenty-four funding?
Yes. Good question Darren. Academy, Academy Financial Year, yeah. Yeah, I don't know. I don't know the answer to that one. Obviously, I'd need to check what's happening with this SSG, the School Supplementary Grant and how that's, because that's all been rolled in. So maybe it's something I can speak to you offline about Darren, if that's okay.
And perhaps give us an update at the next meeting for everybody else as well, Mike?
Yeah, of course. Yeah, hopefully I'll know a bit more about it by then, yeah.
Thank you. Stephen. Oh Sonia, did you want to come in now? Is that in answer to this?
Is that okay? It's not an answer that. It's just going back to the answer Mike gave, which perfectly about the the High Needs Block. So, you know, in terms of that, that's the the area where we're the lowest really in Suffolk. And that's because the historical element of that, even though they've now, I think they changed it in twenty-two, twenty-three to be. So they allocate, I think it's thirty-five percent of the National Funding Formula is on the historical element. It used to be set on the seventeen eighteen budget, but then they changed that to the seventeen eighteen actuals. And I think Suffolk even came out worse on that, if I remember rightly, than when it was on the budget. As as Mike said, because Suffolk were trying to remain within their financial envelope. And for whatever reason, others weren't doing it. Now, some of that might be that our latent demand, you know, our demand has come through much, you know, later than other authorities. And, and you know, we we might have been a bit later to be putting in different activities or, you know, seeing a trend in the higher needs than than other authorities. But there's nothing at the moment, unfortunately, in the National Funding Formula that's going to change that. So I can't see in terms of levelling up, they'd have to, they'd have to take out that historical element funding as part of the budget for Suffolk to be on an equal footing. And one of the things that Mike and I did look at was in twenty-three, twenty-four. So I think the High Needs Block goes up by about eleven million for Suffolk. But if we had the same per-head funding as Norfolk pupils for the High Needs Block, we'd have an extra eight million on top of that. So that just goes to show, and that's all around that that historical element funding. But as I said, you know, we're doing an awful lot of work, particularly with Rachel, to lobby the ministries and, and, you know, MPs, et cetera. And as part of, Gemma wants to come in as part of Delivering Better Value and SEND. I know it's the, you know, we're really anxious that it's made fully aware that the reasons for our High Needs Block deficit is actually not our spending, it's our funding. Because when you look at our spending per head, we're, we're in within sort of the average what Shire counties get. So I'm sure Gemma might want to say something additional on top of that.
Yes, you're welcome Gemma. Stephen, I will come to you in a minute, I promise.
Well, I noticed to echo what Sonia of Mike have said. I mean, I've said it again. And I will say at the next Schools Forum that, you know, we are underfunded. We receive, we have received some additional funding this year and just let forum members know that, you know, we are, we have got clear guidance on how to forward that that funding to the special schools and prews this year, which work is already happening in the background and all schools and prews have been contacted about that. So that will help moving forward. But yeah, the funding is still inadequate. We have done some work with Delivering Better Value, made it very clear to them about the position we're in, shared with them all, with them all of the data that we have around our spending per head, as Sonia mentioned. And all of that is being fed back to the DFE. We've made it very clear that even with the, the, we're putting, we're putting a, putting a bid for a grant for a million pounds to deliver some changes or to deliver some new activity within Suffolk. That won't address the deficit. It won't bring us down to breaking even and it surely will not allow us to recover any of the deficit. So we've been really clear with the Delivering Better Value Programme people about that and they are feeding that back to the DFE. So we're, we're doing as much as we can do, you know, is obviously there's probably more we can do, but we like, I think it was Mike said earlier, lobbying and, you know, we're working closely with Rachel Hood in order for her to take these messages back to to central government.
Thanks for that update Gemma. I know it's a, it's a difficult picture, but at least by being part of the programme that you are, at least it's somebody else taking some messages back to DFE and we can only hope that those messages might land in a different way this time, but.
Yes, hopefully, hopefully. Thank you.
Thank you. Stephen, I'll come to you. Thank you.
Thank you Alison. Sorry, I haven't got a webcam. I'm CFO for Sapien to Education Trust. I wanted to ask about the Falling Roles Fund. Because it has a requirement on it that the schools are good or outstanding. Is that a DFE requirement?
It is a, it is a DFE requirement. Yeah, yeah. They're quite clear on that. So there's a, there's a number of requirements and that's from the DFE. So although we did query that when we were coming up with the Falling Roles Fund and it's something that me and Adrian spoke about as well. Yeah, it's a DFE requirement, unfortunately.
The reason I ask, because we're, we're being asked to take on a school that has a falling role, isn't rated good. And the councils say that the school is required and at that level, but with the level of role it's at, it's not yet sustainable and it's how we get it to that position. So, yeah.
Okay, well, we'd, you know, we'd be more than willing to have some conversations with you, you know, about how else the local authority can potentially help with with things like that. But yeah, I think, I think we are sort of quite, you know, there's, there's stipulations and I don't think we can deviate from the policy, unfortunately, Stephen.
Thanks for confirming.
I'll leave you to have a separate conversation on that potentially then. Thank you. Sonia, is that an old hand or did you want to come back?
It's an old hand Alison, sorry.
Okay, thank you. And likewise, Stephen, is that, was there anything else you wanted to raise or is that an old hand too?
Apologies.
No problem. No, but it's always worth checking because sometimes people think something else they want to raise. No problem at all. Anybody else got anything that they would like to query about the content of the paper? Ah, hang on, I'm coming back into the chat. I haven't been in the hands up. Okay, so Sue, thank you, has confirmed that Send Out Special Schools have had confirmation about the additional three point four percent. And Alan, on Send Funding, forty-five local authorities are in the Safety Valve Programme and another fifty-five in Delivering Better Value. So one hundred of the hundred and fifty-two local authorities in England so are even better funded local authorities, Send Funding. Sorry, the punctuation got me there. Of of the hundred of the hundred and fifty-two local authorities in England. So even in better funded local authorities, Send Funding is a very big issue. I got there in the end. Apologies, Alan, for not reading that out very well. Mike, if nobody else has got any questions, I will just thank you and your team because this is such an enormous exercise every year. You know, we look at the Annex A every year and just go, oh yeah, the figures have changed a bit. But I know there's an awful lot of work goes on behind the scenes to to make all those numbers work for the best for across all schools and and all sectors in Suffolk to give the best balance of the way that we can allocate that money within all the different constraints, some of which we've touched on today. So, so thank you for all that's gone on. And yes, Mike is a genius. I do agree.
No, thank, no, thank you. I appreciate that. But obviously Schools Forum voted for the National Funding Formula, so it does make my job a lot easier. So thanks to Schools Forum for that.
And as I was on Schools Forum, when we agreed that all those years ago.
Exactly, yeah.
Okay.
Thanks.
Any, any other points on that before we move on? And wrap up. Okay, so any other business from anybody today? Robert, over to you.
Yes, thank, thank you Alison. Just very briefly going back to Gemma, she just touched on Delivering Better Value. And we did have that at the end of last year. We were going to have a specific update on it. I don't know if this is the right time or if it's too early. But.
Planned for them meeting in April, Robert.
It's April. Thank you very much. That's that. Thanks.
Yes, because we, we're all due to meet again on Thursday, the twentieth of April. And one of the key papers for that meeting will be an update from Gemma on on Send Provision. Anything else anybody wants to raise today? Sonia, did you want to say anything else about, anything else on the forward agenda?
I think the other thing that will be on the forward agenda would also be, I'll probably do, it might have to be a verbal update just about the whole DSG outturn because we'll sort of have a.
It's usually around May, isn't it? So we're in between meetings.
We'll have a proper one, but I'll have some, I'll have something that will give a there or thereabouts figure. I mean, you can obviously guess it's not going to be pretty with what's happening in SEND. But as, as Alan said, with that number of local authorities, and the Safety Valve one is the ones for the authorities that have the even bigger issues. And we're not in that. So I hate to think how much some of those have got. So, you know, in a really odd way, it's a bit comforting that we're only in the Delivering Better Value for now. So, yeah.
Okay, we'll, we'll take that as a positive note to end on then Sonia. Okay, I'll now wrap up the meeting then and thank you all very much indeed and see you all again in April. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you Alison. Bye.
Thanks Alison. Bye.
Thank you.
Thanks Alison. Bye.